Call to order, the Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, meeting of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask you to bow your heads in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. If you'll please stand for the pleasure of ladies.
The pleasure of ladies, to the five United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is to review the adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, no real adjustments to the agenda, but I will point out that under appointments to boards and commissions, Sarah Lewis is requesting to be appointed to the Transportation Advisory Board, and we have that as the Advisory Committee for Home and Community Care Block Grant.
That change is so noted. Motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have another bittersweet opportunity to say farewell to one of our long-serving public servants, Marty Byers, the current Chief Deputy of the Iroquois County Sheriff's Department, one of two chief deputies. So I will come out and I would ask for his wife, Lee, and daughter Marley, to please come up with Marty up front.
And Sheriff Campbell. I think you've already had an opportunity to have a Marty roast, right? Or a Marty party.
Yeah.
That's great. This is just another example of what makes Iroquois County so special, in terms of delivering services for the benefit of our citizens, is high caliber dedication of our service. And Marty Byers absolutely epitomizes all the characteristics and the character that you want for someone serving in the benefit of our citizens. Marty started as an emergency communicator in 1986. He started out part-time, then full-time in 1989. He went to a volunteer status for the Sheriff's Department, and shortly thereafter, went on full-time with Sheriff's Department. And they grew it. Two years later, 1992, he became a canine officer. And I guess he could begin us with lots of stories about his dogs, because they really become part of the team. And they're out there doing dangerous work, and really serves as a tripwire for a lot of dangerous situations, and they put themselves at risk for the benefit of their trainers. He transferred in 1998 to Serteen, and as a canine officer, July 1, 2004, he was promoted to a canine sergeant, and worked with the rest of the forceful team and ICE. And then in late 2004, he was transferred back to the road deputy as the road deputy sergeant, and as sergeant was in charge of seven personnel deputies out there covering well over 500 square miles of territory in Iroquois County. That's just hard to have, that few, that's a thin blue line out there. And then, he was promoted to training lieutenant in February 06, trained all the Sheriff's Department's employees, and in '07, promoted to captain, and became principal commander. And he was also responsible for working all the purchases, vehicles, communications gear for the Sheriff's Department. And that is a huge job. It's not just purchasing them, but then coordinating them, installing, maintaining, and all of that process. Then in March 2012, he was promoted to major, and then December 2014, he was promoted to one of the two chief deputy positions, where he served until he's retired. Is it yesterday, this morning? But as I've said before, you know, the strength of our county is in our county employees, our citizens, and the strength of their ability to do their job depends on having a family that is lookless, forward, and leading at all hours of the night for all kinds of different calls. And never really knowing what those calls are going to be like. You know, when you're out there at the tip of the spear, it just sort of comes with territories, the job, and, you know, you're prepared to deal with whatever. What's much harder, I think, is being at home, knowing he's out there doing that, and had no way to influence that, just did not know until you see the door open again. And that takes a special wife, it takes a special dog, and the recognition that Marty has his really family there, has all been a great essential enabler for this work. And now, his battle lady, Sheriff Campbell, who's, you know, enjoyed it together for many, many years, and get into some more colorful stories about Chief Deputy Marty.
Yeah, yeah, because he's got something to show for himself, man. There's a reason I'm standing on this side of the podium, because I think with Marty, we have a little most, I guess, tried to decorate, and, you know, one thing I gotta say, and this is one thing, Marty, this is Marty, we had our career, I was Marty, I guess I spit things, and just for everything from my school bus. So I think you guys ride Marty about four years heading into our career, and so then, when I started riding, is who I started riding with was Marty, many a times we can spend riding Marty. I thought the other day, I saw you all pushing me through the back, Marty's own weekend and his cell phone, actually, and truck, we were hurt by the bar at that point. I saw him, so Marty, so I, so back, we, and I was mad. But us coming through trouble, working the west side off, looking at, saying, look at my west side car, busy, because we're working with it all the time, we was looking out there, working the dirt, look, Marty, and he had his dog, I knew the dog, obviously, so he would say, excuse me, he would say, I'm very worried, because I would, I would go do that, but I didn't think, but he would come to train our taxi team, our SWAT team, sort of control, we'd get him into, and he went to train, and I reached out and did some things. We worked great together, and had a good relationship. Yesterday was his first day, we sent a text, and Sunday, and so yesterday, he was out there, and made sandwiches, and that would be fine, so, my sunglasses, sorry. And today, actually, he's gone and said, I need him with somebody, because if there's a question, and like Chief Bell, I mean, as a person or something, we always, also today, we're going down, we're going, hey, what do you think of this? So really, he's not retired, he's just not being paid. But with that being said, I can say, I could imagine whether Chief Bell, you know, he's been great with Marty, we had, I am a oldest girl, same, same time, Marty and I, so we met a lot, you guys, Marty's wedding, so, still here, so it's on some run. But I can tell a story, but I don't say, one thing I can say, I very much appreciate, and I want to give you a gun, with case in mind, Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much, I think I'm the general, or chair of your past.
And if I, Marty J. Byers, an appreciation for your dedicated service to Iroquois County. Wow, 31 years, it's been a lot of changes, a lot of good things. I think, I think that we've got a county manager now that's trying to put us in the right direction, and as an employee, you know, as a taxpayer, I appreciate that, and a good board that seems to be backing us, so, if there's any feedback, we'll talk about it, but thank God.
Thank you, brother, Kelly. Thank you, Lee. Can I get a picture real quick? Thank you, brother, congratulations. Come on up. Somebody can take a picture, we'll get the board up here.
Marty, how about recognize your mom and dad?
Yeah, my mom and dad here.
Come on up for a picture with us. Oh, come on up. Family affair. Hold over there. Right in the middle there. Sheriff, come around the other side. Why don't you hold your clock there? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother, thanks, sir.
See you, guys.
Thank you for letting us go, Marty. Oh, really? Thank you, ma'am.
Marty can wear one of these now, that he's all, you know, now, you can, she can sit down like this, you can wear one of these, Marty.
Okay, there are no appointments before the board, there are no public hearings this evening, and administrative matters appropriate for the consent agenda, Mr. Smith, if you'll please tee those up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 8.1 was a request from Tax Administration to present the annual tax settlement and approval of orders to collect. 8.2, a request from the Finance Department to surplus 83 sets of extrication suits and transfer them to Mitchell Community College for use in the Public Safety Training Program. These suits have no resale value, and they'll be transferred at $0. 8.3, a request from the Finance Department to adopt a resolution to sell 1226 Williams Road in Statesville, recently acquired through tax repossession. The minimum starting price on this sale will be $4,200, and that's the value of the delinquent taxes. 8.4 is a request from Administration for Approval of Budget Amendment Number 2 to Accept and Appropriate $50,000 in JCPC Level 2 Funding. 8.5, a request from the Finance Department for Approval to Revise the Receipt Processing Requirements for ICATS. 8.6, a request from Iroquois State School Schools to Approve Budget Amendment Number 2A in the Amount of $1.8 Million to Advance Funds Prior to the Next GO Issue in 2018. These are for the two middle school projects being designed for the schools, and we have been putting away money since the original tax levy on the school bonds to pay for these improvements, or this advance. 8.7, an adoption of a Resolution Regarding Installment Financing for the Public Safety Complex Project, and this was at 75% of the project, this is not for the entire thing. We've set the bar fairly high in this case, although I do expect coming back to the board with a lower amount, as we mentioned in pre-agenda. 8.8, request from the Department of Planning and Development to Approve a Project Ordinance Amendment Related to the 2015 Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Pool Program. And 8.10, a request from the Clerk to the Board for Approval of the Minutes from the Meeting on July 18, 2017. 8.9 was removed from the consent agenda.
Are there any further comments concerning the consent agenda items that were summarized? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements for any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions? 8.9? We're getting a little fast. Well, I thought I'd do that after this. Okay. Appointments to boards, maybe we'll just do this. We have one appointment to the Board and Commissions for the Transportation Advisory Commission.
I make an appointment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's.
Sarah Lewis.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. There's one appointment to the Central Inno-Workforce Development Board, nomination for Mr. John Chalas.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion, that we nominate Mr. John Chalas to the Central Inno-Workforce Development Board, please.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. And finally, we have an appointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Commission, as Deborah Alfred has volunteered. Is there a motion?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman to appoint Deborah Alfred. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. And I will circle back to item 8.9, which is a request from the Department of Planning and Development to resume a tabled matter from the May 16, 2017, meeting concerning a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction for the John Clontz Family LLC property to the town of Mooresville. Proceedurally, the first item to consider is removing it from the table for consideration. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we remove it from the table for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Halk. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make some comments. We had been, several of us, board members, or all of us at some degree, with staff, was heavily involved with the Catalina and Ponderosa neighborhoods about this release of ETJ, and back when we had our public discussion and public hearing on it, the developer, Ryan Holmes, had gone back to the table, and I believe he's addressed every issue that he can control with a preliminary approval of the planning staff and some of the elected officials in Mooresville, which this would be in their jurisdiction if we release ETJ. But I wanted to thank the citizens in these areas for their involvement, they did, we had a meeting last week that went very well, was respectful, it was great dialogue, the developer and the real estate people involved have been very active to try to accommodate as many needs as possible. We'll continue to work with these guys, along with the elected officials in Mooresville, on behalf of the Ponderosa and Catalina neighbors, to address the issues that are concerned by them, and, but I just wanted to thank everybody involved for what they did and how they did, it was very professional, and that's how a democracy works, is we, we don't know about a problem until they come to us, and we try to help them to deal with it, and with the developers' help, and all their involvement, I think we've come to a point to where we should be comfortable releasing that ETJ to Mooresville.
Any additional comments? Okay, procedurally, one thing that we did receive, all of the commissioners received this today, was a request from the town of Mooresville to not release the extrator, the ETJ, and to allow their staff some additional time to be working on some issues relative to the substance of their zoning regulations, as well as process improvements or changes. If we take this off the table and vote, then if it's a negative vote, then that ends the issue. If it is a positive vote, in terms of releasing ETJ, then it is my understanding that Mooresville has 60 days in which to assign zoning for this property. If they do not act within that 60 days, then the zoning release is null, and it returns to the county jurisdiction. I would just say that, in a spirit of comedy, with our municipal jurisdiction, they've made a request to defer this, I think by leaving it on the table, then we have the ability, if Mooresville has the, indicates that their workload is such that they can work through this issue, that we can then retrieve it off the table at that time. But the motion is made, any further comment?
I just, having that in mind, Mr. Chairman, the town of Mooresville staff is bogged down, and that's their process, but when we started this process a month or two ago, whatever it was, with the Ponderosa Catalina neighborhood, the developer, he's done what we've asked him to do, I believe that our due diligence was done, there's a lot of staff time been involved in it, and neighbors' time, developers' time, and I believe the right thing to do is, at this point, the final say is in their jurisdiction anyway. Their process to annex this property in December, all this process does is give them the jurisdiction now to start looking at the planning phases and all of that, and if they choose not to establish the zoning in 60 days, it comes back to us just until December, and they will annex the property anyway in December. But I think for us to honor our commitments to the neighbors and to the developer for what the work they've put in, and our staff time, I believe we would be better served to honor our commitment with respect to our colleagues in Mooresville, I don't think they're aware of how much time and due diligence we've put into this situation.
Well, I certainly think that a lot of the underlying issues and concerns were addressed in a very positive way, in a substantive way, and I think all the parties should be congratulated for their willingness to engage and, you know, have fruitful and substantive discussions, and to continue to, and a lot of those issues will continue to need to be massaged. Okay, any further comment? Motion to remove the item from the table has been made, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, nay. Motion carries four to one. At this time, is there a motion regarding the substantive request for the ETJ release?
Mr. Chairman, with the discussion that we've had, I think it's appropriate that a motion be made to approve the zoning release and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? I would just say that on, now that it has been retrieved from the table, that in terms of the substance of the request, as I said, I think all the parties have discussed this matter in good faith, and arrived at as made accommodations, I know, from both parties, so, all, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business, that's item 11.
Mr., sorry. I was gonna bring up the Mountmore contract.
Oh, okay. You wanna go ahead?
I can handle it if you want me to.
You go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, our last meeting, we had a discussion that we were wanting the Mountmore Fire Department and some of the others to go ahead with a formal, and formalize a already existing practice of a mutual aid with the fire departments in town of Mooresville, and these guys are moving in a positive direction, and they've agreed that they're willing to sign that agreement with those guys, and there were some proceeds being held from last year, until that process was far enough along that the board was comfortable releasing last year's funds, so I'd like to make a motion that, in good faith, we release the last year's proceeds that are being held back to Mountmore Fire Department.
Motion by Commissioner Halk, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. And move on to new business, item 13. Special project ordinance?
Yeah, okay, I apologize, I thought we handled that in pre-agenda, but what I would like to have approval from the board consent is Commissioner McNeely and myself, our General Government Task Force, and we would like to bring up and look at several issues with our staff regarding our special use permits and various other zoning issues throughout the county, to see if we need to make a recommendation from us and staff to the entire board to tweak the, to tweak our 2030 horizon, or any of these issues, so I wanted consent from the board for us to meet with staff and discuss all these issues.
All right, I'll take that in the form of a motion.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, county managers report?
Really only one thing to report tonight, and this is just an update, we have, there are a lot of moving parts right now with our public safety complex and our jail expansion, our two major, our major construction projects. Hopefully, we will have some answers to a lot of those funding questions, as well as our timelines, and hopefully by September, we will begin seeing some activity take place. Bids will be coming in on the jail August 10, and we should be prepared to bring them to you on the 15th, and we will also be bringing forward some other information, and hopefully we can get to moving some dirt out at the public safety complex, so we're getting very close to moving forward, as long as we can keep the bids in line, so just a quick update.
Really want to express our appreciation to the staff, especially David Salivi and the engineer crew, that's been thoroughly meshed with all the end users and the design and tweaking and number crunching that's gone on for the last, basically, year. So we've already conducted a closed session pursuant to attorney-client, nothing to report on that. Any further business to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to speak for a second, I feel like since we've issued our letter from our last meeting, and now we've received an email back, as far as us moving forward on purchasing land that we voted for unanimously in our last meeting in June, that land now is no longer for sale to us or anybody, and I think that needs to be made public knowledge. So at this point in time, the project that we planned is dead, and also any other further building on that property, as we know, is dead. And in conversations with the Ag Department, probably as much as a year or more before And in conversations with the Ag Department, probably as much as a year or more before it will be even looked at again.
And I will add to that, that particular land is no longer in play, but it, that doesn't mean that the plan to address some of the needs of our agricultural community is gone to, from Plan A to Plan B, and that'll be involving other pieces of property that we will entertain discussions concerning. So, all right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. You're adjourned.